Next picture of the challenge.
Yep. Here we go. That's a good one.
But I rather didn't know.
It's what I'm trying to do.
All right.
I'm gonna have them speak on this item here.
Hi, Councilor, um, you know the meeting is at 10:00 PM? Okay, okay, yeah, transfer. So we'll see you very soon. Perfect, thank you.
Legitimate, which is absolutely true. How did this, how did this, we have this? I don't know. Well, I, I thought this was. I didn't see your. None of them need that fire, right? It was actually, it was actually. They also want to be a lot more serious because I think. And they're not, not going to do like.
I'm gonna allow them to speak on the, the communication. All right. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting for the Lawrence City Council. Today's day is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, and this meeting was supposed to start at 5:00 PM. We apologize. Pursuant to chapter 20 of the Act of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid allowing participation, both in person in the city council chambers as well as remotely. Anybody that have requested link for the Zoom meeting was provided through the city clerk's office. This meeting is also being transmitted live through the Lawrence City Council Facebook page as well as the Lawrence City Council YouTube page. Madame Claire Rocco.
Councilor Levy. Um, so Council Levy is noted as absent. Council plant?
Present.
Council Luzon is noted as absent. Council Del Rosario?
Present.
Council Santiago is noted as absent. Council Amalo?
Present.
Council Reyes is noted as absent. Council Vice President Infante?
Present.
Council President Rodriguez?
Present. Uh, as per section 3.5, uh, section C, number two of the Lawrence City Charter, any three councilors can call for an especial meeting. At this point, three councilors called for this especial meeting. Councilor De Rosario, Councilor Anna Levy, and Councilor Selena Reyes. Both of them signed this petition and called for this especial meeting in regard to the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority's items. So this is gonna be submitted for the record. And at this time, I would like all you guys to join me for a moment of silence. Now join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as.
Well, as you, as you all saw us, we were looking at this, this corner for the flag, but it was changed over to this side due to the construction that we've been having here at the council chambers. So any inconvenience, we apologize. So at this time, we are allow everybody that is here today with two and a half minutes to speak in public participation. The rules for public participations are as follow. You are going to have, as I just mentioned, two and a half minutes to discuss anything related to the city of Lawrence. You can refer to this council as a whole. And we at the two minute mark, you hear a beep sound and indication or some type of sign indicating that you still have 30 seconds to go. And then at the two and a half minutes mark, you have, your time is up, it's expired. So at this time, anybody do you have a list from the public that actually want to speak? We haven't picked them up yet.
Does anyone like sign a call registration? We just may do so at this time.
Let's just tell you how, what's gonna operate tonight. The matters that you're here for are gonna be referred to committee. So there will be no vote, there will be no discussion. So, but you're here, we realize you're here. If each individual group wants to have a spokesman in two and a half minutes, tell us a little about what your proposal is, the council's all ears. So I would ask that each, someone from each proposal sign up and be the spokesperson and.
And it's important to recognize that it's just on any topic. It could be your proposal or it could be on anything. We can just form a line and that's fine.
Does anyone else wanna sign here before I take the sheet? Last chance.
Okay. How are you? Thank you.
Anyone else? Right, thank you.
All right. The first person that we have on our list for public participation is Rafael Guzman Danielito. Please name and address for the record.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rafael Guzman and Danielito is my nickname. I live at 38 Becons Field in Lawrence, Mass. Why are we here? Why are we here? Well, first of all, thank you, Councilor Rosario, for setting this up. I know you did this at my request. I wanna say thank yous to the administration, to Brian Depeña and his office for open, open, you know, opening the dialogue, for having this conversation. So how, how do we get here? Very quickly, I will tell you how we got here. Some of us participated in a process in the city of Lawrence that has been out there for almost 12 months since last year. We, um, we participated in an open bid process of required for proposal for properties that have been on the utilize in the city of Lawrence. It is our understanding that the process is over, that some people have been selected, which I am one of them, I'm lucky to be one of them. And I understand that the thing is not moving forward because there's a conversation pending with the city council. So that's why I asked Rosario, well, maybe we need to talk to the city council. So the city council can see that in one generation, this group of folks that is currently running the city right now or living in the city, you know, have made a transformation in the city since the eighties. You know, just to put it in perspective for some of you. Okay, I've been in the city for a while. In 1996, the building next door, where Terra Luna is at, I purchased that building for $125,000. 1996. In 2012, I purchased more than mills for 1 million. 2012. Today, those buildings are worth millions. The transformation that you've, we've seen in this generation in the city of Lawrence in the last 20, 30 years is something to be happy and proud of. It's something that gives us the opportunity to take these projects that we are presenting in front of you guys for, 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 for properties that have been on the utilize for years in this city. And let's talk about it and say, you know, that's a good project for Lawrence because it will invest over $1 billion in the city over the next 10 years. And in my personal case, in my group, it will generate over 700 jobs, direct jobs, because people will live, work, and play on what we are planning to build in the city. So having said that, I really do wanna ask you that if you find that the process that the LRA used to get us all here, thank you, LRA, for doing what you did. I think you should consider moving this proposal forward and say, let's go and let's get to work. There's no way another minute. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, the next person that we have, please. Just give me the name of the person that is here so you can draw some doubts.
I'm Melissa Seketti in Rio Seketti. Six through 12 Hampshire Street, Lawrence.
Could you please say your name?
I'm Melissa, E.M.E.L.I.S.S.A. Last name is Seketti, S.A.C.C.H.E.T.T.I. I'm Melissa in Rio Seketti. Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh, the city administration, Brian Depeña, the LRA, Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, as well as the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to come up and speak up. My name is Dr. Melissa Seketti, along with my sister, Dr. Orga Tejada. We own West Chester Properties. We are 100% minority and women own business based right here in Lawrence. We have, we are both born and raised in the city. Lawrence is our home. Our parents immigrated here half a century ago, 50 years ago. Though our professional careers are in healthcare, our passion for Lawrence has always gone far beyond our work. We've served nonprofit boards, supported local initiatives, invested in the city by owning property here, one of those properties, six through 12 Hampshire Street, which directly abuts the five Methuen Street parcels awarded to us by the LRA. Because we already own the abutting parcel, we can combine it with five city parcels to redevelop the entire block together. That's something only West Chester can do, and it's what makes this proposal truly unique and special. It is an opportunity to uplift our community, bring much needed housing, and create opportunities for people of Lawrence. To ensure we do this correctly, this is my husband, Rio Seketti, our advisor. Rio is an experienced affordable housing developer, which has developed projects across Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Rollidin, Connecticut, and Virginia. Rio can provide more information on our project.
Thank you, I'm Melissa. Good evening, councilors. My name is Rio Seketti. For the record, uh, I've been an affordable housing developer for the past 15 years. I've been in the real estate industry for 20 years. And I've, I've worked for local, regional, and national developers. My experience includes managing the acquisition, development, and financing of roughly 29 properties totaling 2,000 units. Our plan for the five Methuen Street properties is 120-unit mixed-income community with both affordable workforce and market rate units. We've spoken with Lazarus House about partnering with them with reserving some units for transitional housing from the shelter into permanent housing. We've also spoken with the Merrimack Valley YMCA about providing onsite community space for youth programs and for resident services for those in the transition program. This approach would include housing, supportive services, and community amenities in one location, helping residents not only live there but thrive. We have a very credible financing plan and a clear and achievable path to getting this project developed using state, federal, and local resources, all of which currently exist now and all of which I've utilized on other development projects. We're ready to deliver a project that reflects Lawrence's character and historic nature while meeting the city's housing needs and creating another multitude of benefits for the city, including jobs and local hiring. Our, our three approaches to our development project is local, local, local. That means hiring local companies, hiring local engineers, architects, contractors, having local workers do the construction work and housing for local people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next person.
Recording in progress.
The next person we have is Matias Company Manuel Matias. Name and address for the record, please.
Manuel Matias, 68 Broadway, Methuen, Mass.
Name is Anibay Levy, 85 Morris in Everett, Mass.
I just wanna start off by saying thank you for hosting this event. Thank you for allowing us to be here and present in front of you. Like I stated, my name is Manuel Matias. I am a developer, investor, and manager of real estate here in the Merrimack Valley. Today, we're here to present you guys with 20, I mean 40 to 60 units, mixed-use component development. In order to do so, we've partnered with Studio 26.
So we're, my company, Studio 26, we have a firm that does architecture and interior design in Lowell, Massachusetts. Um, and yeah, we're working with Manny to create this project.
So our strategy behind this is a solution-based strategy. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the, the nation, the state, has a housing crisis right now, and our project stands to provide a solution to that by bringing 40 to 60 mixed-use units, commercial on the ground floor with residential on floors 325. The units will consist from anywhere from one to three bedrooms with sizes from 600 to 1,200 square feet. This, this development will not only bring jobs to, to the city of Lawrence, it'll bring the much-needed housing, but more importantly, it'll also bring a subsidy component. 20% of the units that we're here presenting in front of you today will be subsidized because we understand that things are getting a little bit pricey. So we wanna keep in mind not only that. On top of that, we're also bringing small businesses. Our project has committed to bringing in not only our company, Matias Company, like I stated, a property management brokerage and construction company, but also a small law firm to the city of Lawrence. So along with the, with the, with the units that I've mentioned, along with the affordability, along with the solution to the housing crisis that the state, city, and nation is facing today, we're also bringing jobs and small businesses to the city of Lawrence. And we, in our original presentation, we showcased how we have certain state-level representatives that have shown support for, for our project. And we're hoping that with your support, you guys are able to see not only what the citizens of Lawrence saw, but also the LRA, and it is a project that. I'm sorry. Thank you.
The next person that we have is Jimmy Salama.
Good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Salama, 525 Essex Street. Thank you very much for having us here. And it's been pleasant since I moved from New York to Massachusetts. Right now, in the lot, I'm trying to build it. I own about six buildings around it, was maybe about 150 units of artiment, and I know what they need. So I'm trying to take this lot, the one I'm trying to build, to build 205 parking lots and also supermarket to be convenient to everybody there. And with this, we're gonna bring also more job for everybody. It's, uh, it's been simple, and I'm trying to just continue what we've been doing so far in, in Lawrence to continue with project and something Lawrence will benefit, and not just Lawrence, the people in Lawrence to benefit a project like this. I hope you accept it, and I hope you give me the chance to build it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Alberto Nunez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, City Councilor. I really appreciate the opportunity you give it to us to present this meeting tonight. And we're here to present a project that we be involved since last year, since July. We put a lot of effort, a lot of energy and money to put this process together. Citima Property is a, is a family business that been managing and developing property in the city of Lawrence for 33 years. And now we are concentrated in the West Island where there is a North Canal area. They also know as like a West Island. And we are concentrating developing that area where we own Nuna SLC, being managed by Citima Property, Inc. And we are, um, we are totally concentrated in developing that area there where we, because we are the majority on all the property in that area, complete in the island. And besides that, our experience is be creating some vending property for years and years where we don't have nothing. We've been creating a property to be accessible, to have a new business. We've been serving, serving hundreds of residential and small businesses for over 30 years. And we are here today, and I have member of my team here to answer any question you might have. I know we have a short time. I know we go to the next level in this meeting, and I really very happy to see this moving forward for that direction. Thank you.
I'll just take a little bit more of the time. So at, at a high level, what the Nunez family is proposing on the Pemberton Place site. Certainly, my name is Mark Alamo. My home address is 81 Greylock Street in Methuen. 30, 330 dwelling units, about 20,000 square feet of retail, of retail space, of retail space, approximately 400 onsite parking spots as well as satellite parking around this. And at the end of the day, what the, what the theme really is for the West Islanders, Mr. Nunez was sharing, is to curate a space that will become a destination for our city and an anchor to our city as folks are coming over and into the city to really capitalize on our riverfront assets and everything else. What we're here also echoing the, the, the words of the other members, the members of the public that have spoken is really requesting the city council to act with a reasonable amount of urgency, given the amount of time and energy and funds that everyone has put into this. The vast majority of the developers that are here present today are Lawrence developers and are, have assembled their teams with people that are either from Lawrence or actively committed in this city. So we're all here to help move our city forward, to help address the housing challenges, to help continue to, to feed and reinvigorate our local economy. And, you know, with respect to the Nunez project, assembled here with me are Gary Seidel, whose, his family's obviously been involved in real estate in the city for years and manages real estate through Bell Tower Commercial Real Estate, as well as Gino Peroni, who is also a Lawrence kid. But his experience, I think, probably far exceeds most of ours in everything he's done as a project manager on a global basis, as well as our design, Matt, who was with Fishbrook Design, who, you know, really has created a really interesting curated building for the city. So in closing, really just is help advance this process down and down, down, down the river, so to speak, so we can, you know, have some, come to some. to speak, so we can, you know, have some, come to some conclusions and really get these projects moving forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All these names are going to be submitted for the record. Now we are proceeding as following. We have no public hearing for today. We have communication reports. We had, but there is no communication, communication from the mayor, city officials, city attorney. On this item, we should have some type of petition as a report coming from someone so we can allow at least the presentation, that the overall presentation of the LRA, but it was not added to the agenda. Usually this...
Someone can make some comments?
I haven't received any chats or any comment on here. So we move forward from public participation already. As far as the, I mean, there is ways either here or on the chat. There is no way for me to entertain a presentation at this moment. We know nothing on these specific items, because if I entertain an item and I open it up for the floor for the presentation purpose, that means that I didn't send it to committee and as per our charter, Section three point five, Section D, I shall have those items be sent to committee. But I went ahead and I asked the city attorney to see if he's willing to put his name as a report, as the petitioner for a report coming from the city attorney. He was kind enough to say yes, so we agree upon allowing, putting his name for allowing the LRA to open up the discussion, not on particular project, but the overall process of that entire situation. I asked him, and he agreed upon. So now we can have the LRA coming in front of us, not to discuss the project, but any type of wording or reporting that they have in general, overall discussion, not to anything in particular to any project, but like I said, the process of the LRA.
Good evening, Council President. Councilors, good afternoon. Just to, the way we decided to do this is very short. Attorney Brian Corrigan is going to speak on behalf of the LRA to explain...
Is that your name?
Yeah, sure. Octavian Spanner, I'm the senior advisor to the mayor, Mayor DePanyan, but also the executive director of the LRA.
Are you our here today as the...
As the LRA, yes, correct. But I'm stating both my positions. Mr. Chairman, would you like to just briefly?
Thank you, City Council, for having us in here. My name's Eric Walker, eight East Haverhill Street, Lawrence, Mass. Chairman of the LRA. You have a stack of the work that we've done over these many months and engaged with these developers who have also put a lot of effort into this. I think we should clarify, moving forward, between the recommendations and the conclusions that we came to, and hopefully we can move forward with that.
Good evening, Council President, councilors, city officials. Brian Corrigan, one twenty-two Chestnut Street, Endover, Mass. I represent the Redevelopment Authority. With me tonight are the members you just met, our chairman, Eric Walker, Ramon Quisada, and Pedro Tejada here. Other member, Anna Medina, is not with us tonight, but she may be on the Zoom. So I appreciate the opportunity here. I do understand that there's, this has not been an easy process, because frankly, I don't think Lawrence has ever been through this process before. Certainly, the city has had urban renewal plans before. I believe the most recent one was in the area of the, behind the library back in the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties. I don't think any of us were involved in that particular project. So in terms of logistics, we're sort of paving our own way here. But just to give some background on how we got to this point, in two thousand and seventeen, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts approved an urban renewal plan. That plan was prepared by the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, approved by the Planning Board, and ultimately by this council. That urban renewal plan was submitted to the state, and it was approved. What that urban... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Please call the law for Councilor Levy and Councilor Reyes.
Councilor Levy?
Present.
Councilor Reyes?
Present.
Urban renewal plan, essentially what it did in a nutshell, by the way, you should all have, and I realize many of you probably just received it today, but we did file it late last week. You have a packet of material. Essentially, you have the proposal from the individual developer for all of eight of the projects that we're putting before you, as well as the appraisal that was done in two thousand and twenty-four. You also have an appendix which contains the executive summary of the urban renewal plan. The full urban renewal plan is available on the web. I believe it's on the city website and the LRA website. The full plan is about a hundred and eighty pages, very detailed, lots of charts. The executive summary is excellent and really covers, you know, most of the nuts and bolts and requirements of your renewal plan. So what that did was it created an urban renewal plan area, which essentially, if you were to draw a line, it encompasses much of the downtown area from Broadway over to Union Street, bordered on the north by Common Street, and then to the south, crossing the river includes many of the sites on Merrimack Street, north of Merrimack Street and south of the Merrimack River. So you have Merrimack Paper and Fifty-Five South Canal. In that plan, the city designated several parcels for disposition. And that, that plan once again was approved by the city council in two thousand and seventeen. Among those properties that were approved for disposition back in two thousand and seventeen were the Merrimack Paper site, which is comprised, I believe, of three or four separate tax parcels, as well as Fifty-Five South Canal Street. Those two projects are two of the projects that are before you today and will be coming before you again through the, whatever subcommittee you're going to assign this to. What we did in two thousand and twenty-four was we sought approval from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to amend the urban renewal plan to include other properties for disposition. These other properties are all vacant, city parking lots that are within the original urban renewal area. We did not seek at all to increase the urban renewal area, but we did seek state approval to identify additional properties for disposition. So what you have essentially, there are several, several of these projects are comprised of multiple tax parcels. But what you have before you are eight projects, which the LRA has vetted through an RFP process, which began last year, in fact, predating the RFP process, was a request for letters of interest. Then the RFP process was published, I believe, in early July. We received twenty proposals by the deadline of September thirteenth. We then formed a citizen advisory committee, which I believe all of you participated in in some form or fashion, either by appointing members of your district's constituents. I believe Council LaPlante was one of the members of the advisory committee. That committee was convened and reviewed all of the projects, had the developers come in to make their pitches, questions and answers, and then ultimately, recommendations were made to the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority then re-hosted the developers for further Q and A and presentation, and I believe with one exception, selected all of the projects that were originally recommended by the citizen advisory committee. I believe the only one that was different was the Common Street West site, which is Mr. Salama's site. But we'll get into all these details with you when we get into the subcommittee presentations. So to sum it up tonight, because I know that you haven't had a chance probably to review everything that you have in front of you in detail, we have eight projects coming before you pursuant to the urban renewal plan. Without getting into the legal aspects of who has the right to select the projects, what authority is needed to sign off on these projects, who has the right to sign deeds, let's forget about all that. We're bringing these projects before you because the LRA wants to work with the city council. Nobody wants to invest millions of dollars in a project where the city council is questioning the process or the authority of the Redevelopment Authority to enter into agreements with the developers. So ideally, what we would have from you tonight would be a blessing in the form of a vote to move forward with these eight projects, to negotiate with these developers, to get the best deal that can be gotten for the city of Lawrence, to sell these properties to these developers with conditions, and to give these developers then the ability to go forward through the zoning process, permitting, try to get their projects approved by the other divisions of the city that are required for approval. I realize that that's not going to happen. You're not going to give us the blessing tonight. So I think ultimately what we will be asking for as this process unfolds over the next several weeks is for you to give consideration to all the work that's gone into this process, the diligent efforts made by the Redevelopment Authority members, the staff, the citizen advisory committee, the consultants, and then, of course, the tremendous work that was put into these projects by the individual developers, all of whom, I think you know, most are local developers, some are multinational, but all are committed to, and it's actually would be a requirement of the disposition, to maximize the use of local contractors, local laborers, and so on and so forth. So I think what we have tonight, if I'm not mistaken, and if the city clerk could confirm, I think we, are we able to have the Zoom presentation from Professor Karas, just to give a brief summary of the individual projects?
No, we don't want to tell any individual projects.
Okay, it's sort of an overview PowerPoint. It's not, it's not like a...
The thing is, is like, if we get into the details of the individual project, we're defining the purpose of sending this committee. So I entertained that, I entertained that what you just did, which is an overall view of the process as to how you guys get here. But any individual project that will take place, or anything related to the project that will take place at the subcommittee level.
Okay. Can I ask a question, Council President?
Definitely.
So in your mind, how do you foresee the process unfolding at subcommittee? Are you going to invite all of the developers or all of these individual cases back on a single evening, or are you envisioning breaking it, breaking it up into maybe a couple of different subcommittee meetings? Just curious, because I imagine there's going to be a lot of questions, and we want to try to do the best we can to present it in an organized fashion, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely fair questions, and we'll be in contact with all of you guys. We wish that we can have individual projects to consider, but everything going to be through the LRA, so we'll contact you as to how we vision it. We don't have that answer right now, but entertaining all of the, all of the project in one night, it does not, that's not feasible. But definitely, we'll see how we can proceed, but we haven't, we haven't get to a bridge to be able to cross it. So it is important that you mention a couple of things when it comes to the LRA and when it comes to a specific situation as to how you guys get here. Since, I believe, a year, two years, maybe two and a half years ago, we were, we get the information that the mayor have signed an equity order without, well, for the transfer of the properties without consulting with the, with the city council. And we always have a specific point that need to happen, and those specific points were related to that any type of parcel that need to be transferred have to be a vote on the affirmative from the council and subsequently a signature from the mayor. And that's why this whole process is taken to the point that we can consider as a long process. But we've been clear since the beginning as to how we have done this in the past. I went to a couple of your meeting to ensure that that's been put up on the, that's been put up on the record, and we also sent communication on writing to the LRA as to how the process should be. We are here now. We are in the process of getting a vote from the city council, and that's what we're doing. And another thing that you mentioned is that you guys were looking for approval from the state to amend the, to amend the urban renewal plan that was approved specifically in December two thousand and sixteen by the council. And yes, that was, you were referring to a minor amendment that doesn't require the city council vote, and just only the state is required to approve that specific process under a minor amendment that is stipulated under the urban renewal plan, Lawrence urban renewal plan, which is basically a, definitely a fine process as per our renewal plan that you guys submit and the council approved. So if it is anything else from the LRA when it comes to how we get here, and then we will proceed.
Council President, I just want to acknowledge that our consultant, James Karas, is online.
Yes.
But as per your wish, I will request for him, to thank him to be here, but for not to make any comments in terms of the project.
No, I mean, he can bring comments right now. We entertain it, but not into any individual project. When it comes to the process, also how we get here, if you have anything to add to that, by all means, he can definitely...
Can you ask him? I mean, since you have him...
I'm assuming that he's here in the, here in us. So Mr. Karas, do you have anything to add not to an individual project, but to the process in general?
I, excuse me. Good evening, everybody. My name's James Karas. I'm principal of Karas Community Investment, and I'm a consultant to the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority. I have a presentation that is a mix of both. One is an overview of the process and a summary of impact of all eight projects. Then the second half of the presentation is on individual projects, which I hear you. You do not want me to speak or anybody to speak to the individual projects, but I can present to you in a few minutes the process in detail, which Attorney Corrigan began to discuss, as well as a slide that I would like to show you, most importantly, is the overall impact of these eight projects, not pointing any individual, but the eight projects. Council President, is that okay with you? May I proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Again, officially, I'm James Karas, and the consultant of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, and the services I've been providing have been grant writing, working on the update, the major amendment, which I reached out to many of you to conduct interviews with you on the updated urban renewal plan, as well as the RFP process for these eight properties. Some of this is, Attorney Corrigan has already mentioned, but the process for these city-owned properties, this has been a really rigorous, transparent, and community-driven process, and it's been designed to ensure the best possible outcomes for the future development of these sites. And I want to walk through the phases of the process and highlight the engagement, evaluation criteria, and final deliberations that led to the selection of the developers. evaluation criteria, and final deliberations that led to the selection of the developers. I won't repeat what Brian had shared, we, we had submitted the minor amendment, we issued a request for letters of interest last year, we did that to understand, is there market interest? I've worked with several redevelopment agencies, both in Massachusetts and Florida, and, and sometimes there's no market interest in the particular property or for other economic reasons. And so we decided to issue the RLI to test that market interest. Needless to say, we had a very strong response to the RLI, and then we decided to move ahead with an official RFP for the city-owned properties, inviting developers to submit proposals that align with the urban renewal plan and the city's economic development housing revitalization goal. The response was overwhelmingly positive with 20 proposals received from a diverse set of developers, bringing their unique visions for transforming these properties to benefit the, the community. Upon receiving the proposals, LRA staff and I as the consultant, we conducted a preliminary review to ensure all submissions met the RFP's minimum requirements. Proposals were evaluated based on financial feasibility, alignment with city goals and the urban renewal plan, economic impact, community benefits, and developer experience and capacity to do what they say they'd like to do. As Attorney Corrigan mentioned, we created a citizens advisory committee, a 25-member city's advisory committee composed of residents, business owners, city officials, and stakeholders. And their role was to view and provide feedback on the proposals, ensuring community priorities were reflected in the evaluation process. I, I have to personally say, I was really struck by the professionalism and the thorough review that this committee did of all the proposals. It was quite a, quite a, it made quite an impression on me. As you know, I'm an academic, if you will, and these are the types of things we teach in public policy, and, but rarely do we see this type of citizen-driven process. The, we, we all, it was actually 21 development teams were invited to present their proposals in the public forum at the CAC, and these presentations resulted in the community and stakeholders hearing directly from the developers, and they, and the CAC and the public asked questions, and ultimately, we all gained insights into the potential impacts of each project. Following the public presentations, I as the consultant conducted a deeper financial and technical analysis of each proposal. We reviewed the pro forma financials, development timelines, potential funding sources, and anticipated job creation and housing impacts, as well as potential tax revenue implications. We also assessed each project's proposals consistency with the city's master plan, zoning, and urban renewal objectives. Throughout this process, we provided detailed reports to the LRA board, summarizing findings, strengths, and concerns related to each project. This allowed the board to fully understand the feasibility, risks, and benefits of each potential. Shortlisted developers were invited to the final presentation to the LRA board, where they had an opportunity to answer questions, clarify project details, and address any concerns raised during the evaluation process. I'd like to double underline what Attorney Corrigan mentioned to you, is that seven of the, ultimately of the eight proposals that were selected by the LRA were in agreement with the CAC in terms of the number-one rated projects from the CAC, and then the other one was rated number-two by CAC, and LRA selected somebody else. But the process showed kind of a strong agreement coming from a number of different stakeholders, including the CAC and the LRA board. The LRA board deliberated, deliberated in the final selection of proposals based on the alignment with the city's goals and the urban renewal plan, and, but these selected projects represent transformational opportunities for Lawrence, ensuring long-term economic growth, job creation, and enhanced quality of life for residents. This process was deliberate, transparent, and community-driven, and community-exclusive, ensuring that the final selection of the development proposals served the best interests of the city of Lawrence. The LRA is confident that the chosen properties, projects will not only revitalize these city-owned properties on their own, but also catalyze broader investment, create new housing and jobs, and strengthen the economic vitality of Lawrence. So again, I'm not going to get into any specific projects at your request, but overall, I do want to share with you the, these projects. Residential units, we have over 800 units across all proposals. Commercial retail space, over 215,000 square feet, including medical, retail, workforce training, and a supermarket. And also, seven of the eight projects have some type of residential component from 100% to, you know, 70% to 80% as a mixed-use project, and one of the projects is for a new hotel project. There are two supermarkets that have been recommended, over 100,000 square feet of green and civic public spaces, and, you know, parking seems to be an issue that keeps coming up from a number of different stakeholders as we work on the downtown updated master plan. Everybody immediately says, parking, parking, parking. These eight proposals are proposing approximately 1,310 total parking spaces across all projects. The estimated development costs for these eight projects is over $400 billion. And the estimated property tax valuation, we worked with their city property assessor to come up with some of these numbers, estimated property tax valuation is over $200 billion. Given that, and if all these projects have, depending on market timing, et cetera, we conservatively estimate that the annual property tax revenue for the city of Lawrence from these eight projects will be between $3 to $4 million. This winds up repeating what I just said, and I, I won't go any further. These are the eight projects and their location, and, and their proposal that they, they have. But thank you for your time. I look forward to working at, at your request with the subcommittees, and as you move along in the process, if you have questions ahead of time that you want me to include in terms of presentations, I will certainly do so. Thank you.
Thank you. If it is anything else from the LRA, Councilor Esposito Infante have asked me to add her within, an area that she can express an opinion about that, and that was under the public participation, but we went over it already, and I'm going to allow her to express her two cents on this matter. So Councilor Esposito Infante.
Thank you, Council President, for you. There, there were two comments made during the participation that I would like to address or state by the way, as we stated, Council President. The first thing is the statement that was, that was, well, was asked of us, to handle this with reasonable amounts of urgency. And I just want to make it clear to individuals here in the chamber, both on Zoom and also our constituents watching from home. From the beginning, the Council, and I'm just going to refer the Council as a whole, has asked-
To work, to work with the LRA. This vote would have, would have been done probably a while ago, if things would have, if we would have just worked together from the beginning. That's one, that's the first statement that I want to make. Secondly, I, before I go into this, I want to say thank you to, to, to the LRA as a board, they did take the time to meet with councilors. I left my meeting feeling more open-minded about the process and the projects that we have before us, but I also learned tonight that I did not know that a resident of District E, who is proposing a project in District E, went to my colleague and asked for my colleague to put on the special meeting. I would have appreciated the decency or the respect of my colleague if he would have just given me a call to let me know, just like I give my colleagues the respect to give them a call when their constituents go, come to me with an ask, an issue, or whatever it might be. So I know the LRA has asked us to work together, to move forward, but even like a small situation like that is already leaving a bad taste in my, in my mouth. I'm, I'm going to leave it there, Council President, thank you.
Right now, we are going to proceed with committee reports. There is no committee report from the Budget and Finance Committee, no committee reports from the Housing Committee, no committee report from ordinance or personnel. Public safety, there is no committee report, economic development, there is no committee report, Committee of the Hall, there is no committee report, and all business, there is no, all businesses, since you all know this is a special meeting agenda, we only have the two A projects. Subsequently, this is going to be into different committees, and eventually, we're going to either entertain it at the full council as a regular meeting, or in a special meeting, it will be later on decide. So item, now new business, we have Item 33225, the approval of transfer of city-owned parcel to the LRA per the Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, South Canal Parcel 1, Mary Map Paper, 11 South Canal Street, MAP LAT 123 LAT 1, 9 South Canal Street, MAP 123 LAT 2, 19 South Canal Street, MAP 123 LAT 3, by the River, by the River Park LLC, the proposal as approved by the LRA. This is going to go to the Housing Committee and the Economic Development Committee. Item 12, Item 33325, approval of the transfer of city-owned parcel to the LRA per the urban, per the Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, the South Canal, Phase 2, 55 South Canal Street, MAP 103 LAT 68, for City Group, this is going to go to the Housing Committee and the Economic Development Committee. Item 33425, approval of transfer of city-owned parcel to the LRA per the Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, Pembentown Park, North Canal Street, MAP 125 LAT 28, for Cinemark's Project Inc., this is going to be to the, this is going to be sent to the Housing Committee and Economic Development Committee. Item 33525, approval of transfer city-owned parcel to the LRA per the urban renewal, to the, per Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, Mettoon Street East, 11 Hampshire Street, MAP 125 LAT 19, and 245 to 251, Mettoon Street, MAP 125 LAT 20, for the Matthias, for the Matthias Company, this is going to the Housing Committee and the Economic Development Committee. Item 33625, approval of transfer of city-owned parcel, LRA per the Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, Mettoon Street West, 261 Mettoon Street, MAP 145 LAT 50, 265 Mettoon Street, MAP 145 LAT 49, 277 283 Mettoon Street, MAP 145 LAT 48, 289 293 Mettoon Street, MAP 145 LAT 47, and 9 Franklin Street, MAP 145 LAT 46, per West, for West Chester Group, this proposal will be sent to the Housing Committee and the Urban, and the Economic Development Committee. Item 33725, approval of transfer city-owned parcel to LRA per the Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, Excess Street, 205 Excess Street, MAP 106, LAT 14, 209 215 Excess Street, MAP 106 LAT 13, and 217 223 Excess Street, MAP 106 LAT 12, per Aquino LTD, this proposal will go to the Housing Committee and to the Economic Development Committee. Item 23825, approval of transfer of city-owned parcel to the LRA for, per the Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, Common Street West, 442 to 502 Common Street, for the Lawrence, for the Lawrence, Lawrence Development, this is going to go to the Housing Committee as well as the Economic Development Committee. Item 23925, approval of transfer city-owned parcel to LRA per the Lawrence TBD Urban Renewal Plan, Common Street East, 139 Common Street, MAP 106 LAT 74, 129 135 Common Street, MAP 106 LAT 75, 0 Common Street, MAP 106 LAT 76, and 115 Common Street, MAP 106 LAT 77. Per Joe, Joe Womar Group, this is going to go to the Economic Development, Economic Development Committee. There is not a housing component on that project. Now, councilors, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh. We will, yeah, no. We'll, we'll let it go. We haven't scheduled the meetings for the, either the Housing Committee or the Economic Development Committee. We are going to be looking at the, at the schedule, since, and how we're going to split the project, but the urban renewal, the LRA will be, will receive a notification from those two committee as of when that's going to happen. Usually, it's within the next week, but we're going to allow the Chair of both committees that is here today to just look at the schedule and see how it's going to proceed. So we'll, we'll let you know, Councilor Infante.
Yeah, just as a point of parliamentary, and I'm not looking for an answer this evening, the last item that you referred was to the Economic Development Committee. I don't have it in front of me, my understanding is that all items that are going to be voted on for a final vote need to be sent to a standing committee. The Economic Development Committee is not a standing committee, but please look into that.
No, I have, I have it right here, and I was thinking about this, and that's Section 3.5, Section D of the City Channel that established that. Item 33925 will also follow as any other, as any other item into the Housing Committee as well as the Economic Development Committee. No problem. So, councilors, as we just said, we are going to be looking into the schedule for those two committee, when they're going to be meeting, and then we will let the LRA knows as of when and how we're going to split the presentations or the questionings. We also need to look into all those items that we have. As you guys can see, it's eight different books, over 2,000 pages that we need to look, plus the urban renewal plan, that we need to make sure that we have all the documentations. At this point, councilors, I'll, as a courtesy, I'll, I'll entertain, I'll, I open up the floor for councilors to have a short comment or a question we know answer for the LRA.
Council, uh, Council President, if I may.
Councilor Lozano.
I'm the lucky one. Thank you, Council President. What will be the timeframe of this meeting?
No, the, the City Council do not have a timeframe to make a determination tomorrow or today, or, we, we don't have that. We don't have that, we, we don't have that specific time to take a vote on any item that we have in front of us. That doesn't happen with any of the other items that we have on the agenda, unless there is a, an, an emergency that we consider, the city will consider as an emergency, and we have a, a specific timeline. There is items that we have on the agenda that we, that we have timeline, perhaps personal from any personal matters that we need to take a vote, perhaps the head of department, we have 30 days, but other than that, we do not. But other than that, we do not.
Thank you, Council President.
No problem. Councilors, Counselor.
For you, Council President, I felt that it is important to reflect my feelings towards some of the comments that were made as well.
Yeah, Councilor, but I mean, as we always do.
I'll wrap it up real quick.
Yeah.
I just want to, Council President, I have a floor.
No, but give me, no, give me one minute. Let me clarify on that, because we are respond, we are deviating from the normal process.
I'm not deviating, I'm going to make it quick.
Counselor. Counselor, sorry. Counselor. The thing is, is like, we never answered to any public participation, never in the past. So let's keep it like that, and then we can continue with that, with the answers and questions. And we can probably take the podium next time.
You opened up the floor for comments, so can I make a comment?
But not on public participation, yes, as a courtesy, let's keep it up. Otherwise, I just need to close it then. Because, and then it's going to be a back and forth, and we don't want that. Because public participation, we never answered those.
I'm not asking a question.
Counselor.
I just felt that it's super important to clarify, is just to provide clarity, that any delays in regards to the, the properties that are here before us has nothing to do with the city council. So any delays that, that all the developers have faced, we are simply just doing our due diligence. As our talented attorney has expressed, this is the first time that these properties are being transferred to the LRA, to which is taking away the decision and the process from the city council. So again, just wanted to make sure that the narrative that's being fed or being given to some of these folks, that there is clarity in ensuring that they know that, that any delays that they have faced has nothing to do with the city council.
Yeah. And, and it's important to recognize the following. We're not, with the, the city, the city is not in a rush to transfer properties in general. It is, it is a process that the LRA took over, they presented, the executive branch is bringing it to us, and we are taking a determination, that's, that's the reality of the, of the fact. And also, something that we need to clarify very quickly for the, for the people up there. We're not talking about parcels, we're talking about parking lots. So from now on, when we refer to a specific parcel that is a parking lot on, please refer to those as a parking lot, because those are how it is. And that way, people knows the, the reality of it. But I mean, at this time, if it is not, any other comments from the councilors, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion to adjourn, properly second, no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it, thank you so much.